All righty. Uh, good morning and, uh, call the meeting to order.
Any items from the public? Rodriguez, come on up.
Uh, good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Corey Rodriguez. Address is four nine eight, uh, Woolen Mill Road. Um, as you guys already know from seeing me in the past, I usually come to you when I see a concern in the community. So today I want to talk to you and I know your first thing is going to be, we're not responsible for them, but it affects the community. So I still want to discuss it and that that's going to be the West Virginia DOH, specifically ours in District Five and traffic studies. Um, one of the first things I just wanted to note, uh, last month in the journal, there was an article about our state and the only counties that really are showing growth in our state are right here in the eastern panhandle with Berkeley County by far showing the biggest growth along with Jefferson and Morgan County. And, uh, you know, one of the things is, you know, I believe that Berkeley County is in a position to lead the state of West Virginia. So I think that we need to be able to, um, step up for our community when they're not being served to the level they should by our state departments. Um, so with that said, you know, me personally, I have zero faith in, uh, the District Five DOH. I just wanted to hand out a couple of things to, so I can go over why this is.
Thank you, Corey.
Gotcha. So this, uh, first thing, uh, the Department of Highways has a webpage called SWAT. SWAT stands for Safety With Action Today. If you go down to the, the bottom, the way the email chain reads, it's bottom to top. Last year, not this year, last year on February second, I figured the road I live off of has potholes on it. I will note this submitted on this website so they know. So I do that and, you know, they respond said it will be taken care of by May thirty first. On May twenty sixth, the second email up, I receive an email that says, Dear Mr. Rodriguez, I'm pleased to advise you that showers lane was repaired on May twelfth of two thousand and twenty-three. I drive that road every day I leave my house. I knew right away when I received this email and I didn't get touched. So I went out, I took pictures, which you can see in the back, and I wrote back to them and I said, you know, I appreciate the email, but I would appreciate it more if the work was actually completed. And, you know, their response back to me is, well, Mr. Rodriguez, these pictures don't show potholes. This is delamination and delamination will be completed on or before October thirty first of last year. Well, as of today, nothing has been completed. I don't care what they call it, potholes, delamination. The eight years prior to this that I lived there, they were always filled in as potholes, you know, by May thirty first. This year, or last year, we get nothing and the road is deteriorating more than what's even in those pictures and more spots. I, I mean, why, you know, this SWAT website, why is, are we wasting taxpayers' money on it if it does nothing? They've done nothing. They've responded back. They acknowledged it. They still did nothing. And part of the problem is, you know, when DOH was established way back when, they were from our district put out in Hampshire, Hampshire County. But if you look at our district and where the growth is and everything, how, how do they have a full grasp that's going on in these rapidly growing counties from out there? I think that's a, a, a big point and I think that we should press the state government, the DOH, that in reality, we need to move that from Hampshire County to over in Berkeley or Jefferson County. Uh, another example of the DOH, in, in my opinion, failing us. You look at I eighty-one, that's the only interstate in this whole district. They have twenty-four miles up, twenty-four miles down to take care of. If you have driven on I eighty-one north or south between exit twelve and exit twenty-three, there is only one, in my opinion, passable lane on that road and it's the far left lane because that's the only lane that's smooth. If you drive into center lane or right lanes at seventy miles per hour, your car is just going like this from the constant cracks, lines, you know, differentiation in the road. I, I, I went on vacation three weeks ago. I drove from here to Asheville, North Carolina. That down and back, I spent seven hundred and twenty miles on I eighty-one through Virginia, Tennessee. Nowhere along that stretch was I eighty-one in the condition that I eighty-one is in between exit twelve and exit twenty. I, I, I mean, you know, those are visuals of how they're failing us. I see how they're failing us every time I watch a planning commission meeting. When people come up with concerns about traffic, I understand that the planning commission isn't responsible for that directly. But we have to understand with growth, which our planning commission keeps approving and proving, approving, that has a factor on the roads, that has a factor on the safety, that has a factor on everybody's lives that has to drive on these roads. So I think it's a complete joke that when we have all this growth and, you know, development after development coming in and we can't even get a damn traffic study for the life of us because nothing meets the criteria. So has anybody thought maybe DOH's criteria is wrong? Maybe DOH doesn't know how to manage this type of growth? I, I mean, to me, for people to come up here and talk, you know, it takes a lot to get people out here. I hate public speaking and, you know, I'm disgusted, so that's why I come out. But people should not come out here and have concerns that are serious and them not be dealt with by DOH. One other thing, last night, uh, we had in this room a, uh, Bordisoni Appeals Meeting. And one of the concerns with the project, which is a lawyer's office off of, uh, Tuscarora Pike, is safety of the road there, safety of whether or not, you know, put in a new business, the pullouts, uh, we right past it, already approved the development, forty-five single family houses. You know, living there, everybody knows that the road isn't safe. But what disturbed me is the developer told us last night that on both of these projects, they submitted to DOH and offered to pay for deceleration lanes so people could safely turn on and off the road. And DOH told them they cannot do it. And the developer said it's their belief that DOH doesn't want, even if the developer pays for it, them to do this because then it falls in DOH's right away and they're responsible for it. So my question is, at the end of the day, what's more important? The safety of the people of Berkeley County? Or DOH not wanting to do its job and create a safe environment for us and allow these developers to add features that will help with the problems that we all know they have? So my suggestion to you guys is be in Berkeley County, be in the leader in the state. We need you to step up for the people in Berkeley County. And I believe that in our subdivision ordinance that you're working on, that you should put our own criteria for when traffic studies are needed. And we should show the DOH that you are not going to fail the people of Berkeley County and allow this growth to create unsafe roads. We are gonna at least try and help and make this mandatory, whatever. I, I, I know you can't traffic study every single project, but we can do better. So that's what I'm asking you guys going forward to consider is a better way to protect the people of Berkeley County with our infrastructure that we're behind on. What can we do better? And I believe that if we come up with a better way of mandating these traffic studies, then we can help make the roads safer along with our rapid growth. Um, I believe that's all I have. Um, as always, I thank you for listening to me and, uh, you know, you guys, if you ever have more questions, whatever, feel free to reach out to me.
Yeah, Mr. Rodriguez, typically in this time, we don't respond typically. But I will, I will assure you that every, nearly everything that you mentioned has been taken to Charleston. We've, we've sit down, we've sit down with the leadership in DOH. We've worked with District Five engineers. We work with our local traffic engineer to try and answer and get some of the results that you're talking about. some of the results that you're talking about. There are one set of traffic warrants for this entire state of West Virginia. I don't know when they were ever changed, but I can tell you, they don't work. We just had this discussion, Steve and I did, two weeks ago, out on Route Nine with their engineering staff, and it, it wasn't the most conver, wasn't the most pleasant conversation we ever had, but I can tell you, every opportunity that this commission gets to try and improve highways and roadways to make them more efficient and more safe, we try. I can promise you that, we, we're trying.
Yeah.
With the interstate project, it wasn't approved through the MPO that Jim and I served on Barnhart, and, but it has been delayed at this point, it was gonna get paid this summer, and so we expect in the next round of funding that they're gonna put it back on, and I don't know if it'll get done this fall or not, but it's in the plans to have that section that you're talking about on 81 page.
Yeah, and, hey, I, I recognize that you guys are pushing for this and doing work, I just wanna keep it out there and keep it present and keep the pressure on them, so I, I do appreciate what you guys are trying to do. And, you know, I, I feel that by keeping it out in the public, you know, it keeps it on top of mind, and that's why, you know, I come and speak out from time to time.
Appreciate it, thank you, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Any other items from the public? Yes, sir.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
I'm, I'm here to address the council about Workers Memorial Day, as I have in the past, got a few remarks. I'm, I've got members of my Labor Council here with me. My name is John Christensen, President of the Eastern Panhandle Central Labor Council, which is 25 affiliate organizations and over 2,500 members in seven counties in Eastern I appreciate Mr. Rodriguez's concern, and I'm glad I waited, that, that was a wonderful presentation. For somebody who, who doesn't have public speaking skills, he did a hell of a job. I'm here today, as I have in years past, to draw attention to our local Labor Council and the National AFL-CIO's commemoration of Workers Memorial Day, April 28th, 2024. And this has been going on for over 50 years. Across the U.S., workers are organizing for strong health and safety standards from employers and government to improve working conditions. Our workplace safety, health rights are not freely given. Working people have fought for them for decades and still do every day, from shop floor to the halls of Congress. Our job is not finished. Our nation's job safety laws are too weak already, leaving many employers who violate the law unaccountable. OSHA, it's Occupational Safety and Health Agency, penalties are still too low to be a deterrent. Black, Latino, and immigrant workers are killed on the job disproportionately. We just lost six workers in Baltimore a few weeks ago in a very unfortunate yet freak accident. Every day we lose more than 340 workers, every day, who are killed, and more than 6,000 suffer injuries and illness because of dangerous working conditions that are very preventable. Every accident is preventable. Workers Memorial Day will be celebrated this Sunday, April 28th, in Wheeling, West Virginia, to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the Fenwood Mine Disaster, with remarks by United Mine Worker President Cecil Roberts. I plan on attending, and I'm looking forward to seeing my brothers and sisters of the AFL-CIO who have seen too many deaths in the coal mines of West Virginia. Together on this Workers Memorial Day, we will elevate safe jobs and raise our collective voices to protect what we have confronting attacks on safety regulations to keep our local workplaces safe, and demanding action to win stronger protections. We hope the Berkeley County Commission will join us in this pursuit of justice for workers to return home safely every night. Thank you very much, and I would ask for a moment of silence for the workers killed in West Virginia last year. Thank you very much. And would it be out of custom to get a picture with the, the county commission? You have time for that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a break, and then we'll, we'll have a picture.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I wanna tell you about, we're supporting this musical that's happening on The Return of John Brown, that's coming up in May, and also, we have handouts here for you. Oh, you already got them? Okay.
And, and John, once again, as Mr. Rodriguez, thanks for bringing that to the forefront, you know, within the last month, we just had a highway fatality of a, of a road worker, a construction worker.
Flagman, flag person.
And, you know, there's been multiple times over my long career in the fire service that I, that I've had to assist those people or their families, and it concerned me of, like, how, how was their mourning before they left home? Because these people deserve to go back home, you know, whether it's in a work zone, to try to get people to slow down, or, or other problems with, within industry even. So everybody has a responsibility there, from the worker to the employer, to, to make a safer working environment.
We're gonna take a quick break and get a photo. Okay, we're back in session. That concludes any, any other items from the public?
Okay. All righty, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda if there's no modifications or changes?
Motion to approve consent agenda for April 25th, 2024.
Thank you, have a motion to have a second?
Okay.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda. Purchase order log, any questions? Tracy's not here, but we can get her if we need to. Purchase order log, internal budget revisions. None today. Have change in status, a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Larry Hess, assessor for Zoann Shetley, or, I got, as a personal property clerk with an annual salary of $35,000 effective April the 25th, 2024. Change in status received from Chad Weinbrenner, Deputy County Administrator for Tammy Fairclough. She is going from part-time to full-time custo, custodian with a salary increase from $1780 per hour to $32,265 annually, and that is effective May the 1st, 2024. Had a letter of resignation received from the assessor for Courtney Cook, and that is effective April the 30th, 2024. And a letter of resignation received from the emergency management from Amy Springer, that's effective May 7th, 2024. The approval of the minutes, April the 11th, commission meeting, President Whitaker was not present, so, and I have a motion to approve the minutes for April the 11th.
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. One abstention due to absence, Penny, thank you. April the 16th, everyone was here, so. A resolution to apply for fiscal year 2025 court security grant. Is that this one right here, Gary?
Mm-hmm.
Do we need to read it?
No, we don't.
Okay, the resolution to apply for the fiscal 2025 West Virginia Court Security Fund Grant Program, this is a zero-match grant that we are awarded annually and is dedicated to be used for court security and safety. This year's request for $136,000 to purchase 20 portable radios for the court marshals and install privacy glass outside of the first-floor offices. And I have a, that's still on the consent agenda. Cancelled check request, County Clerk's Office. Now motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Right.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Nothing from the assessor for the correction of assessments. Moving right along. Board of meeting reports. HD's not here, so Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I had a Berkeley County Public Service Water District meeting. There was a bid opening for a small vacuum unit. They got two bids, one for a trailer and one for a skid unit, and bids were around $84,000 for each one, so pretty much the same. They reviewed Resolution Number 11 for funding associated with the Pike Side Water Main for $174,000, and they reviewed and approved the first funding associated with the expansion of the river plant, that was $1,172. And, let's see, what else? Actually, pretty much, pretty much routine after that, so that was my meeting.
Very good. Mr. President, Mr. President, you have a bid opening at 10 o'clock.
Yep.
All righty, we'll forego the meeting, reports to bid opening.
This is, this, the first one is for the issued pistols for the deputy sheriffs. It has been advertised, we do have certification of publication, it was on the website and distributed, and you have three responses.
Which?
They're sealed up tight, right here, Steve.
First is, the vendor's name is Clyde Armory.
Clyde?
Clyde. C-L-Y-D-E. And that is in Athens, Georgia. Total for all equipment is, I think that's only, the only amount is $38,685.20.
You don't know how many pistols that is?
Uh, 85, Mr. Barnhart. Eighty-five? Yeah. Okay, this next bid is from Law Man's Distribution LLC, Raleigh, North Carolina. Quantity needed is 85, and the total bid is $118,697.40.
So everybody gets one, huh?
And the last bid is from, it's Markle, M-A-R-K-L.
Sounds like it.
Markle, I'm looking for an E there, but it's not. Supplemental, I'm sorry, Markle Supply Company, Inc., out of Pittsburgh, PA. 85 quantity needed, and the total bid is $40,375.
For a range.
Yeah.
Good golly. Maybe some of them shoot some down, who knows? That'll be the job for long.
Some of them are made out of plastic, and some of them.
Right.
Everything you have to deal with, I think I'd want mine to shoot. I don't, I don't wanna say what I said in my meeting earlier, Bill.
You want, you want a little prep for the next one, Mr. Whitaker, it's at 10:05?
10:05, yep, okay, that's, equipment, pistols, equipment.
That is correct, so this would be the equipment for said pistols.
You know, like holsters and stuff.
Yes, sir. They, you do have certification of publication, it was advertised locally as well as distributed through all of your social media efforts, and it looks like, I think in this one, there's six bids, there's, there's several.
Penny, did we find these that are here, or is this just for the reading purposes?
Those are for signature. Although, no, those are for reading purposes, laying there on the table, side of you. I didn't know if you were gonna have them read and review all one to read, so.
Okay.
Let them there for you, watch read, the other ones write your signature folder.
The Markle Supply, again, Pittsburgh, PA. Quantity needed, these are Safari, Safari Land Holsters, and Surefire Weapon Light for 85 needed for both of those, it's $28,074.95. I like that it's easy to read, right up front, up here. Uh, let's see, this is Safari Stain for 85, this is from Clyde Armory, 85 needed, total bid is $16,783.20. Will the sheriff's office go over these?
Review them, yes.
Do you hear the recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is Kiesler, Kiesler Supply, K-I-E-S-L-E-R, out of Jeffersonville, Indiana. Has 85 is needed, and then 75 thumb screw lights. Total bid amount is $17,500, oh, no bid for the 85.
No bid for the holsters.
No bid for the holsters, this is just for the thumb screw light. And Law Man's Distribution LLC from Raleigh, North Carolina, 85 and 75, total bid amount is $28,755.55. One more, or two more?
Two more.
Two more, okay. This is 1042 Tactical out of Wheeling, West Virginia. Total bid for the equipment, $29,285. Total bid for the equipment, $29,285. And Paramount Tactical Solutions LLC. Total bid for the equipment is $31,150. All right, and that concludes the bid opening.
Where's that from?
Oh, the last one?
Last one.
Tactical.
Paramount Tactical Solutions.
Where were they at?
Oh, Wheeling. Was it Wheeling?
That's the one before.
It's 2499 Buck Hill Road, Jarrettstown, West Virginia.
Sorry about that, Pat. I didn't think to look on the signature page, sir. Alrighty. Mr. Catlett.
Yes, sir. First, I want to thank you, Mr. President. Jim Whitaker, with his graciousness, began digging on the water line project at the youth fair Monday.
They have Monday?
Unfortunately for him, he's still unstuck. We thought it was gonna be all shaled, so hopefully, as it goes, it'll get easier, we hope. But him enough and all the other volunteers that are stepping up to get this done.
Yeah, also, paint handling, excavating, and everybody that's partaking. I don't get all of that credit, that's for sure. The guys are in a ditch.
Project, to say the least, yeah. But I estimated if this job was contracted out, it'd be about a $400,000 job, and we should get it done for less than $150,000. Working out well. The other thing I wanted to note, I meant last week, I tracked the jail fees every month. After nine months, we... Or if we have paid the state $157,374 less than we did this time last year, so I've been really happy to see that continue. Meetings this week, most were yesterday. Eddie and I attended the school safety meeting, monthly meeting, and I think there's progress being made in that direction, and I really appreciate the efforts. Elise Gregory at the school board has been heading up that particular committee. Gary and I had a virtual meeting yesterday with... Along with Curtis Keller and Greg Rowe from the Stormwater District, with Gannett and Fleming out of Morgantown, and it's a firm that the water di... Or, excuse me, the Stormwater District is using if and when we finally get a new permit for stormwater. And we were able to exempt that creek valley from that. We're looking at a new possible fee structure that'll be done on impervious property as opposed to a flat fee, so they're gonna do a study to lead us in that direction. Also, yesterday at 3:00, we had a senior services board meeting. I want to compliment the members of that board. Ken Collison was just here earlier. They had a yard sale, the first ever indoor yard sale, and they netted over $2,700 for the senior center. I guess that was the 14th April, that Saturday, so... And it really turned out to be a wonderful event, and one that'll probably continue. At 5:00 yesterday, our board... Eight of our board of directors stayed around, and we served dinner to over forty-seven volunteers, individuals that volunteer at the senior center throughout the year. They're recognized and offered a great meal, and it was a very nice event as well. Then today, later today, we have a meeting regarding the Inwood Park. And then also at 5:00 today, we have an ambulance authority meeting. Look forward to those meetings as well today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Eddie?
Yes, sir. On Monday, I participated in the Earth Day, planting trees and some flowers at North Middle in connection with the Marksburg and their shade tree committee. Landmarks met on Monday, and most of that discussion was on the Dollar General in Arden. They're working with SHPO to try and get all those particular documents arranged so that that historic district can be protected.
Yeah, that was an interesting problem, you know, because it brought up several issues that had never been brought up before.
Yes, sir.
And nobody knew what to do.
Yes, sir. But like I say, they're pulling together all of their local information as well as the state working with them. As Steve mentioned, the school safety committee, and that's... You know, we've got a pretty good presence there, you know, with our sheriff's office and our emergency management team as well. And then I left there and went to executive board meeting with the development authority on personnel. Like I say, this afternoon, we have the Inwood Park discussion, so...
That's it? Okay. I didn't have any meetings, but however, Gary and I did attend the Rise and Shine Chamber breakfast this morning, and I was asked to give a state-of-the-county address and let the Chamber of Commerce know the good things that we do, so it was well-attended. I was surprised to see that many people out there just to hear something I had to say, but it really wasn't about me. It was about the two young girls from Hedgesville High School, about their accolades that...
What's a 4.7?
Seven.
This girl had a 4.7.
Weighted subjects.
Gee whiz.
I mean to tell you. But anyway.
I didn't think it'd get higher than a 4.0, and now they're getting 4.7. I don't wonder... I don't know how that works.
Yeah. Mr. Whitaker, I mean, don't forget about your meeting with the rocks this week. I mean, you spend some time in meetings.
Yeah, yeah. In an excavator, yeah. I was pounding on a rock, or two, or three, or 10, 20, putting in a water line for the youth fairgrounds, but...
It'll get easier.
Yeah, it will. Always calm.
Let's hope, anyway.
I think it will. And let's see, we have a new application received from Donna Van Meter for the Development Authority. Have an opening on that? Are we gonna...
Yes, we will.
Want to interview?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Bring her in.
Bring her in for an interview. Done our bid openings, and we're up here at 10:10. We're a little bit late. Patrick? Come on up. You're a candidate for the Development Authority. How are you doing this morning? Tell us a little bit about yourself.
How's everybody?
Good. How are you?
Doing good today.
Good. Very good. Tell us a little bit about yourself with something we don't know.
Something you don't know? Well, let's see. I've worked for Procter &amp; Gamble for 25 years. In the middle of there, I had five years of Kellogg's. I moved with Procter &amp; Gamble to this area seven years ago to start the new P&amp;G site. The health, safety, environmental leader for them currently, so my first role was starting up one of the businesses there and then moved into this assignment. And currently live in Hedgesville. Been here seven years in the county. Involved in a few things out there with the St. Bernadette's Church. As far as locally, worked with Jennifer Smith and Jim Lindsay-Meyer with the Development Authority on a few things. When CMC came in, there was another project with a local lettuce farmer. So I met with them, shared some information about how P&amp;G came in, what we're doing in the area, business in the area, things like that. So been involved with them from a state level, work with the West Virginia Manufacturers' Association, who are on their board, also working with the West Virginia Chamber of Commerce right now, getting involved with that group. So a little involvement.
You do a lot of traveling for around those.
I have done some traveling, and it usually involves a four- or five-hour trip, yeah.
Yeah, I travel that one too, so... Well, Mr. Barnhart's gonna lead off if he has any questions for you.
Well, I see you went on the Development Authority. What would you... I mean, you gave us an idea of what you do, but what would you bring to the Development Authority to enhance what the Development Authority does?
So, again, when Jennifer and Jim have reached out, it's really been to promote Berkeley County and what P&amp;G has found in the area and how business can contribute to the community. So we share a little bit about, again, what did we see when we came in, and we've had great relations with both the county and the state in development of the area, in our workforce, and so forth, and then what P&amp;G is bringing to the area, so the different boards and community activities we're involved in and the growth we've seen.
Mr. Catlett?
Where do you live in Hedgesville?
Pebble Ridge, right off of Ridge Road there, if you know where Spring Valley, Farmers Market.
Sure. So you take the back way into Morgantown, you said Route 9, I assume?
I do. I come down Dry Run Road.
We had an earlier discussion about the Route 9 and all the traffic there, so, yes. But we do appreciate, I think, your insight, being with P&amp;G would be a strong voice on the Development Authority in my mind. And I know that we've been looking for somebody from P&amp;G for a while, or some big industry, and appreciate the fact that you're willing to serve, and thank you for that.
Yep, thank you for the opportunity.
And I must say, P&amp;G has been assisting several agencies. There's a member of Meals on Wheels, that is, from P&amp;G.
Mm-hmm. Actually, one of the young ladies that worked for me worked, led that up.
P&amp;G does contribute to Meals on Wheels. My wife is president of Meals on Wheels. We're directors.
Eddie?
Yes, sir. Patrick, I'd like to thank you for your interest in serving in this capacity. Are there any glaring changes that you would want to see or that we could do different to make it things better?
Great question. I tell you, I don't have anything right now that just prepares statement to comment on. I know we're working currently with District Water and BTOW on handling freshwater and discharge water, so both trying to help them out. Hey, how can P&amp;G pull less water or send less water to you, and what are some things we can do to work together? So infrastructure, for me, is one of the biggest areas for the county to focus in, because as P&amp;G grows, Clorox is here, CMC's coming in. What's our five, 10-year vision for infrastructure in the area, and how do we keep up, keep ahead of that? That would be my...
Good, and I appreciate, and I've heard good things about you, I appreciate your willingness to sit down with other industry to say, "Look, this is why we're here," because I've used that in the past. I'm like, "Look, if Procter &amp; Gamble finds us to be the right place, you probably don't need to do quite as much research because it's already been done."
Mm-hmm.
You know? But thank you for applying, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Patrick, I don't have anything other than thank you for your willingness to... Want to get back to a community that you're fairly new to, and that means a lot to me is where I sit here, that, you know, we are a good community and love Berkeley County, and it's volunteers that help make Berkeley County what it is. I want to thank you for that, so... Like I said, Eddie will be on that board, and we'll probably be able to let you know of the decision that we make one way or the other, so...
Perfect.
Thanks for coming in.
If there's any other questions or anything I can do, let me know.
Will do. Thank you very much.
I'll continue to help the county. Thank you all.
Okay. 10:20. Sarah McGee. Come on up. It's case manager for Mountain Heart Community Services Proclamation, Provider Appreciation Day. I think I have one here.
Yes, so there's two proclamations here that I've requested be added to the agenda for signatures. One is for Provider Appreciation Day, and that would be May 10th of 2024. The other one would be Mountain Heart partnering with Telamon for Community Action Month. That would declare May of 2024 Community Action Month in Berkeley County. Would you like me to read off these proclamations?
Yes.
Okay.
That'd be fine. Thank you.
So for the Provider Appreciation Day proclamation, it says, "Mountain Heart Community Services of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day, and childcare has provided a safe nurturing place for the enrichment and development of millions of children nationwide and is a vital force in our economy. The pandemic illuminated how indispensable childcare providers are for the well-being and economic security of the West Virginia young children, families, and communities. Childcare programs, which are mostly small businesses run and staff predominantly by women, continue to recover from the health and financial hardships stemming from the pandemic to meet the needs of more families. And West Virginia recognizes that childcare has been and continues to be a lifeline for families, communities, and economy. As such, it has provided much-needed support to providers to help sustain the viability of childcare by issuing payment for enrollment versus attendance and offering grants and professional development opportunities. The future depends on the quality of the early childhood experiences provided to young children today. Support for high-quality children... High-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future." And then it asks to proclaim May 10th, 2024, as Provider Appreciation Day in Berkeley County. And then for the Community Action proclamation, that one says, "Community action has made essential contributions across the nation for 60 years, inspiring a spirit of hope, creating opportunities for millions of people to be part of the American dream and improving communities. And community action remains committed to a nation that creates opportunities for all people to thrive, build strong, resilient communities, and ensures a more equitable society. Community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in 99% of all American counties. And community action builds a and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. Community action strategies and innovative solutions evolve as the needs of individuals, families, and communities in cities, suburbs, and rural areas change. Community action is experienced in advancing opportunities by coordinating federal, state, local, and private resources to achieve results for people and communities. Community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. Community action is recognizing 60 years of innovation impact and providing proven results for Americans. And it asks that you proclaim May 2024 as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of Berkeley County, West Virginia, community action agencies."
Well, thank you very much. I'm sure that the commission up here is more than happy to adopt these proclamations for you, so...
Thank you.
Do you want them separate, or should we do them both?
I'll do them separate.
Okay. Can I have a motion to... Or not a motion. Can I have a... Yeah, a motion to adopt the proclamation for Community Action 60th Anniversary and Community Action Month? Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And the second one, a proclamation, Provider Appreciation Day for May 10th, 2024.
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. We have some. I think they're in our signature page here. We'll get them signed, and I think they have to be attested by the clerk, or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Oh, email them, too. Okay, email them. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A little bit early. Take a break?
Taking breaks, want some pictures?
Oh, yeah, we'll get some pictures. Want some pictures of the proclamation? We'll take a break. Okay, we'll take a break. We'll take a break.